Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, meeting minutes?
Charlie, put them up a little.
We have meeting minutes? Get them right here. Oh, I think we're... Have you had a chance to review these?
Hmm?
Have you had a chance to review these?
Yep, been drawn.
Comfortable, they seem accurate. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018, October 1st, 2018, October 9th, 2018, and October 15th, 2018, am I correct?
Fifteen.
Fifteen's not, no.
What?
Just the first three, the last one aside.
Right.
Well, that's adequate.
It's just didn't come off.
Okay, subtracting out October the 15th.
Okay, I'll second that. Call for vote.
Aye.
These were approved.
You want these?
Okay. I would really like to present it, but we're missing an individual and a signature, so I'm just gonna try to buy more time, but maybe we can present it and work with them to figure out about getting the last signature or however we want to go about it. Okay, alright. Well, next item here is the Town and Berry Board of Selectmen and a proclamation for an individual receiving his Eagle Scout Award. So, what I would really like is if Mr. Samuel C. Stevens could come on up and, if you'd like to, you also can come up, Mr. Stevens and family. Oh, good to meet you, I haven't met you in person, so. This is definitely something that takes a lot of time and effort. You do not become an Eagle Scout without really committing yourself to it, so, on behalf of, you know, I'm the short guy, I'm gonna get over here, well, the tall guy, get between Charlie and I.
Yep.
And then, do it like this. And I would just like to give the proclamation to you, Sam, and congratulate you on a very honorable endeavor, so, good job.
Thank you, buddy.
So, anybody interested in taking pictures of them? Again, we're working on it, we did at least a while.
We'd like to thank you and your family for their service to our town, the family commitment to, well, as an individual, a treatment, and we certainly recognize that, your contribution on your Eagle Award project, we thank you very, very much.
Are you able to elaborate a little bit on this? I guess for the award, I think I took your...
Oh, yeah, I know where to ask.
Another day, it's ten minutes before. Thank you. That goes a long way. I really appreciate that, that goes, that's part of civic engagement to help others and...
Thank you. A little plug for Troop 26, 96 years young. Troop was originally in Berry, started in 1922, and Sharon is the 75th Eagle Scout in 96 years in the history of Troop.
No, that's awesome, good bits, thanks a lot for all you've done.
Thank you, Richie.
Thank you, too. If you don't mind, we'll see when we get the other selectmen to sign this one.
You're an Eagle Scout as well.
We'll contact you.
Father and son.
I'm sorry, yep, so it's over. Great accomplishment for Troop.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So, we can, just, you wanna let me know?
I think we just got word that he'll probably be here in about five minutes, so it depends on if it's easier for you to hang out, he'll be able to sign it. Thank you. Just gonna say, of course, the time, there he is, see? Understood. So, we'll get the speaker off, I forget we scheduled something, so if you can sign in there. I didn't realize you were, like, we just did something and then we got your response, you're on your way. So, I apologize.
I just got home a few minutes, got started cooking dinner, let me follow you on the run, got the message. Some dinners on the stove.
So, that's a young gentleman out there. I apologize.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, much appreciated. This thing undersigned. Forget, how many of those badges do you need to get to become an Eagle Scout? Twenty-one? Thank you very much. I never got past first class, so shame on me, but...
Thank you all.
Thank you. So, I got it ready to release. We did pass the meeting minutes for the 17th first and 9th, but Sandy has them if you want to take a look when you get a chance, and if you see something, you can bring it back up again.
If you already passed them, I'll sign them.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Alright. Anybody in here for a specific item on the agenda? Because we can kind of adjust our schedule based on that. Alright then, let's start with the open space and rec plan grant request letter.
So, I had been in contact with CM RPC about the fact that we're past our open space and rec plan timeline, it's time for us to redo it, and we have worked on re-establishing the open space and rec committee. They've pointed out that the local acquisitions and natural diversity grant is available out there for towns with residents less than 6,000, and that's basically a support grant for assisting in writing that. So, they've provided a draft letter of support for, to be presented to you guys, to ask for assistance through this grant to help develop the open space and rec plan.
Okay, and so this grant, in a way, is to help fund them, to help us rewrite our plan?
Correct, yes, so they would...
Like, that opens us to new grants moving down?
Right, they would work with the open space and rec committee to help basically facilitate it, so they would be the one sitting giving the information, they'd do all the labor.
Just to get it out there again, how many people do we currently have on that committee?
I have two letters of interest.
Two letters of interest?
Right.
Now, is it a seven or a nine member committee?
We said it as seven.
Okay.
I think I'd like to serve on it when it gets going.
I would be happy to let you do that.
Yes, I figured...
We get one more, we can at least have a forum and then...
Right, that at least gets it started, if we can get one more. So, great, and I'm open to, I guess, responding to those letters of interest if they are actual true applications to be on it as they come.
Okay, very good, I'll bring those up for the next speaker.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions on this? I think it's a good step in the right direction, I would support it.
We need a motion on that?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we endorse the letter to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on behalf of our grant application for the open space recreation plan.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Andrew Sandy, I endorse it. Thank you. Okay, let's ping out the treasurer, collector things, I think the first is the wage authorization... Wait, wait, wait. The first is the contract. It's supported by the wage authorization.
Letter of understanding, technically called it.
Oh, right. Yes. Why do you think you can't call it a contract?
This is an employee, not a contract.
Yeah, she would be an at-will employee, it's just the...
I got you.
There's always specific positions that can be contracted, and that's, this position's not one of them.
She's fulfilling out my duties, not negotiating her duties today.
I read the letter of understanding that was drafted based on your negotiations, and I'm comfortable with all of it, the only question I did have is, when we spoke to future years, we kind of implied that the compensation classification plan will be finalized and approved, but I didn't know if this was worth including in second year value in case it wasn't, or is that something we should just amend next year if we don't get to it right then?
We'll wait till town meeting goes through, so we'll make sure we budget the meeting before we commit to it in advance. I don't think it'd be a problem, but I don't think there's a need to do it.
Okay, so if we don't do it and we're not ready for a classification plan for whatever reason?
Right, we could just...
We will just amend this letter based on whatever is appropriate.
I think we're also, with the clause in here, that in any event, the increase will be no less than zero percent, I think that kind of covers us in that regard, if there's an absentee, you know, if we can't finalize a new competent class plan, at least we have that in there that we can negotiate a different amount.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we sign off for the letter of understanding with Sharon Ashley.
I'll second. Can you hear the discussion? Alright then, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. I sit right up, I literally ran out, shut the stove off and went up the door. Alright, next is the Town and Berry Wage Authorization for the same treasurer collector position. We chose last week to enter negotiations, just approved in result of the negotiations for Sharon Ashley to take over the treasurer collector position after Nancy had given her notice. It's at a $58,000 per year rate for 37 hours per week, which is consistent with most of our full-time employees. Starting as of November 19th. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the terms of the contract commencing November 19th.
The wage authorization?
Yeah.
The wage authorization?
Yeah, wage authorization, I'm sorry.
Section, section of motion to approve the wage authorization.
Any further discussion? Yes, Sam?
So, you're saying that the treasurer is not considered a full-time Berry employee, she's part-time?
No. What I'm saying is, for most of our administrative full-time employees, outside of what the town administrator who we have, attend every meeting in the world, is a 37-hour work week, because we work Monday through Thursday, so it averages out to 37 hours, not 40 hours for our full-time employees, so she fits the standard blueprint of all of our full-time employees that work at Henry Woods Building.
Does she receive the benefits of all the appropriate...
Yeah, she's fallen under the same personnel policy as all employees, it's just she's not listed, her position is not listed in the classification plan, so we had to work through a separate letter of understanding for what her pay would be and how the benefits actually lay out as she's a department head. So, that's what we did, we agreed to it, the salary is prorated, so even though it says 58,000, it's based on time through the rest of the fiscal year, not, she's not getting 58,000 from now until July 1st. With that and...
She's ready to receive 15,000, right?
Probably 15,000 less than the 58,000.
Oh, I see, okay.
I mean, ballparking, but yes, something like that. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Is it the 29th? Yes. I feel so good with that, bam, I was on top, I was there. Okay, not bad, not bad. Now, next, we're also looking at an amendment to the interim treasurer collector, we have an agreement with Nancy to help fill in, here or there to help pass on, whether it's institutional knowledge or just where did I leave it, so you know where to take off from. It's capped at a total of $10,000, but it's actually based on an hourly rate and an estimate of number of hours, and I believe this amendment was to reflect a change in the hourly rate to $75 an hour, and that is because some legal reasons where we couldn't cover some of her certification costs in order to maintain her position, and because that, we sat down and renegotiated her hourly rate, which was 68?
62.50.
62.50 an hour.
Right, so it was basically, based on the number of hours that we had budgeted, we, you know, basically covered the gap.
And to clarify, that's a not to exceed the $10,000. If things go well, transition is smooth, we don't use the full estimated hours that we thought might help with this transition, we won't be spending as much, but the agreement is, we're not just gonna carry it forever, and so that's where we're working.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Nancy Talbert, to keep her on as a consultant, as we have it written here.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Alright, call for a vote.
Aye.
Use of town property, we have three items here, I'm guessing none of them are gonna be excessively difficult?
No.
Let's get through all three then and...
They're all, they're all, yeah, town hall.
Okay. Alright, first one I got here is Next Step Studio, the Performing Arts, is requesting use of Town Hall on December 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., except on the 8th, they're doing noon to 8:00 p.m. for dance recital and dance recital rehearsals. Food will be served, there's a bake sale going on at that time.
Are you sure there's no conflict in the schedule?
What days of the week is that, 6, 7, 8, 9?
That's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, so, the Sunday's not an issue because the church services in the morning and there in the afternoon?
Right.
Okay. Alrighty, anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request to use town property for Next Step Studio Performing Arts on the dates of September, pardon me, December 6th through 9th, as listed in their hours.
I will second that.
Yes.
Just as a question, what is the fee now for the use of Town Hall?
$50 for nonprofit, $100 for profit.
I didn't know if it had changed.
So... Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Next one, Maplewind Arts is requesting use of Town Hall, November 15th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Nutcracker Dance. Is it Thursday evening? Anybody have a motion?
Once again, I checked, there's no conflicts.
Right.
Making sure in every time.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the use of town property for the Nutcracker on the 15th of November.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, I believe, is Circle of Song. Request Town Hall.
December?
Yeah, December 21st.
December 21st. Just so I can better read these, is that noted in this?
So, it's on the third page, we note, we found out after, this was the first person to do one online, I realized that, well, they brought to my attention, I didn't have a box on there to ask what day, so...
Okay, you gotta create like a fillable form box for them?
Yeah, so we just put in a, we put it in another box, took care of that, but date and time I realized was omitted from the original form, so...
Okay, so December 21st.
Once again, no conflicts.
Is that a, an evening, a day, do we know often? It's a Friday, so I'm guessing it's an evening. Okay. So, we have a motion.
Motion to approve use of town property, the Town Hall for Nider Moskanowski, if I say that right, Moskanowski, the Circle of Song on December 21st.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I have attended one of their shows, and it's actually a nice show, it, they sing very well, they play good music, and at times, if you're so inclined, they won't actually let the audience participate, so if you need to release something and let it out, they will be happy to let you do the same with them. You have a good time.
Me doing that.
Well, I didn't necessarily, yeah, it depends on if the...
Come just...
There may be those that aren't quite as appreciative if I jumped in, but I'm willing to risk it until they tell me to leave.
I think I could figure YouTube out for it.
Get it out there, and then...
Get it out there.
Then you learn if you should ever do it again. Okay, so, the next item would be the one that's probably likely to have a little more discussion, is the Marijuana Local License Bylaw Discussion, the Board of Selectmen is working on some general bylaws that speak directly to the licensing portion, and potentially some processes that may work with the planning board or other facets of the process in general. Andrew has actually done a good job drafting the good bylaw to start with, I only had a couple comments on some of the stuff that he sent out prior to both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. I guess I would just, give me half a sec so I can just double check my own notes that I wrote, to see how many may or may not have landed in ours. The bigger question I had... So, that's it? So, if you're looking at the package Andrew gave you... Here we go, it is section 5. Item 2, the paragraph that starts with marijuana establishment shall execute maintain a host agreement. If you continue reading, maintain a host community agreement with the town, we shall include the conditions for having the marijuana establishment within the town in conformity with applicable law and as per the policies and procedures established by the Board of Selectmen, period, then this next sentence, I think, got confusing. Prior to negation of the host upon completion of host community agreement negotiations, I'm, I'm sure you mentioned something different there, and I was just wondering what you meant.
Yeah, the gist of what I was trying to get was basically just that the planning board would, or, sorry, that the Board of Selectmen would hold two public hearings before the contract was executed, so I think I might have just started writing one thing and then kind of got off on a tangent about another thing, but basically just that you were gonna hold, that you were bound to hold two public hearings on the draft final.
Yes, okay. Maybe negotiations?
Right, I think that's what's...
Of the host community agreement, and then you wanted to say more like after the negotiations, but prior to approving?
Execution, yeah.
Okay.
After negotiation, but prior to execution.
Alright. Now, this, what you're saying makes sense, and I appreciate you putting it in there because I did mention that I really wanted to push at least two public hearings on this, but this is where what I was presenting to the Planning Board in working together at the host community agreement level didn't get incorporated, and I probably didn't have a good chance or make the time to talk to you about it before this draft went out, so... Originally, what I was trying to look at is, there were certain items in the zoning bylaw that I thought, under a general bylaw, for the host community agreement, would work better for the two boards to work together in discussing specific, somewhat more subjective public comments and addressing neighborhood community impacts that might come up, some of those might be, you know, the type of fencing, the type of visual block, or the, we might be able to speak to a little bit of the architectural request that comes through and put that into negotiations, and so, my first thought, and I'm just putting out what I'm thinking, and I know I can be off, was when somebody comes and submits like a notice and intent to come before the board to start the host community agreement negotiations, we would hold a public hearing based on the initial information they... public hearing based on the initial information they provide. And I agree with some of the stuff you said that you need to start providing with the notice of intent, like you've got to tell us your your parcel, your kind of your site plan at least, and give us something so that we can base the negotiations on. But also identify what neighborhood or what zone or what areas over the public knows, who's asking and where they're asking. Something else came up where I don't recall if it was who I was speaking to, so I, I apologize if I'm not giving credit where it's due. But I was talking to someone that said, when that starts, and it might have been you, so I'm, I just don't recall. The minute they send the notice of intent, they should post something on their parcel that's visible to the public identifying their intent to use that parcel. So that it adds to the public notice that hearings are being made and someone's intending to use that parcel on that site. So you submit the notice of intent, we respond saying, we're gonna schedule these public hearings and this is the information that we need further than what you initially submitted, so we can sit down and talk. At that point, they gotta go and put some type of sign, not necessarily bigger than, you know, an election sign, but it's got to be something that's at the frontage, street side that explains, this is what's going on here, so please, if you're interested, Mr. Neighborhood, come to the meetings that are gonna be posted by the town. They don't have to list it, they're just gonna say, intent to provide generic marijuana facility name. It doesn't have to explain what type, it's just gonna say, we are going before the Board of Selectmen requesting to do this. Then we do the first public hearing in my mind where we actually give the public the chance to come in and explain their different varying feelings and thoughts about it. But what I would like to do is at least invite the Planning Board in on that discussion and negotiations. To try to work through some of those details to come up with a final host community agreement that we all agree on. That would, then anything in the host community agreement has to get transferred to the final site plan submittal to ensure that the plan includes the items identified in the host community agreement. So the details don't need to be known, just a general consideration. And then the final details get included with the submittal to the Planning Board for the special permit. That was what I was talking to the Planning Board about. I'm not saying they've made any type of agreement or commitment to it, I just wanted to explain what I had been talking to them about. So that we're not like changing that course without at least it being more open on the board and our ability to make sure they understand why or why not we're changing course if that's the reason.
I thought we promised the Planning Board in here in the section two that the vote would be between us and their board before we issued the host agreement.
And I agreed, so I think that would also have to be changed.
We can hammer it out, but we agreed that they would be included in the vote. So that we don't necessarily have to be in all the deliberation, but they want to be, that they get a say before, before the host agreement's handed out.
That's what we were saying at their meeting and I agree, and I still wanted to have a joint vote.
I'd like to put that in there. Majority of our board and, and I don't know if they have to say majority or, or those who wish to. It should be majority, we should give a majority there for it.
I was thinking a majority of all those in attendance. And the attendance should require a quorum from both boards.
Simple majority.
And again, we have eight members, official members, so if there was a tie because we all showed up, I thought it was right to allow the alternate Planning Board member to be the tiebreaker. I know it's unusual that the powerful tiebreaker is your quote unquote person that never gets to vote, but.
Why don't you make it a, like a, should make it a failure? I mean, if it's a square vote, you can go back and change something, so that way you can try to get a little.
Because we have the alternate who attends every meeting anyway. Oh, take that back, attends some of them, but he's got his, this new job that probably pulls him away a little bit more.
Andrew may have a good point, I would like to believe that by the time we bring this forward, that we've already discussed with them, we'll already hopefully be in favor of it, which is gonna be a good portion of the vote. If we can't swing them over to majority, I don't want to muscle it through, I'd rather we break it, so why don't we say at times we worked.
Okay. That works.
I think that makes sense, because I don't, I don't want anyone trying to muscle this through in a simple.
Right, I got you.
I'd rather have a more complete agreement on it.
That signage idea you were talking about was brought up.
Thank you, I, I couldn't remember the exact name.
I remember we said it, but I don't want to miss, say the name, so. But that, yeah, that was, I read.
It made a good, good sense, so, and that would kind of fall in our bylaw because it's part of that host community agreement licensing process, so.
It's also.
Twenty-one days before the beginning of negotiations or something like that.
Fourteen days prior to the public hearing.
And there should be.
So.
I assume you have assigned her that time.
They have to sign, have to sign up the day we post the public hearing notice or prior. If they don't, then we push off the public hearing until we can confirm the signs up. Because I think two weeks should be enough for people to drive by and say, yeah, I see a set, what?
Well, the sign that's on the very wall down there, demolition thing, it was up there twenty-four hours and it was like, ooh, ooh.
So. So, I still would like to try to find a way to get the wording so we can bring the two together. Also, to put in that wording for the applicant to post a sign on the property they're looking to do it.
Should we consider not just size, but perhaps a backup, ground color of the sign to be a standard color so people will be able to identify what it is by the color as soon as it's up?
We probably should get into some details like that to include minimum font size. I don't want someone to do a little
Right.
business card taped to a.
Hey, lucky.
But notice playing marijuana or bongs or any smoking or anything, but it should be something.
Should be very similar to a mass D E P N O I number that they put when they're doing, you know, just a placard that just states.
And you could have like a bright红色的sign that's unique, but not a lot of people have any of that color or anything. It draws attention to it, people identify that what it is when they see it, so. It's not secretly posted, really, the idea is to let it be known, so.
Especially with all the election signings that are out there right now, it's like, you see so many, it's
That's one of the size too, Claire has a question.
Yes, Claire.
Maybe I've missed this, but these marijuana facilities, are they just in an industrial zone?
No, it would vary depending on the type of use that they're trying to do. Are they a retailer, are they a cultivator, are they delivery or testing?
Process.
The Planning Board is trying to identify various zones where those fit. So some are industrial, some are business commercial, some might be R eighty for outdoor cultivation. You know, so I don't want to put words in their mouth, they drafted a bylaw that kind of allows places for most of this.
And is that gonna be on the special town meeting, have they?
Special, special.
Yeah. So we're trying to get.
I was curious as to.
Yeah. And I think we're both trying to get it ready so that the general public will have a chance to see it at least a week, if not earlier before the special town meeting, so everybody has a chance to read it, try to digest it before they show up at the meeting. That's our goal, I don't want to, again, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth or promises, we're gonna do our best is what I'm trying to say.
When we get close, we could publish a, a first draft, we're close to, so people have a chance to look at it. If we're happy with most of it, I wouldn't be against putting out a rough draft so people can understand it's a draft, at least give them an idea of what direction it's going, what's on it. And that may bring input in before we have the final draft out as well.
Put it on the town website?
I would say as soon as we have a joint meeting between you and the Planning Board, I'd like to have both of them work together so that, as I had said earlier, show the process of what it would be rather than just, well, here's the licensing bylaw, but it doesn't touch on the zoning aspect and then the zoning aspect being a whole different handle. And then having to vote on both of them and creating that confusion, I'd rather put it out than to say, this is, this is the marijuana package, basically.
Right.
You know, this is the zoning aspect, this is the, this is the licensing.
Let me briefly explain, yeah, the zoning aspects, they're the control, the technical zones, and where they go, the structures. And, and the bylaw aspect will be more the legalization permitting stipulations, licensing like that, and so any scale limits too. But I'd like to get it out there, so it's, it's in people's hands, they can read it as soon as we can, even if this is close, I'd be happy putting this out as a draft because it's close and, and fine tuning from there, but I don't think there's long enough to do.
The only reason I wouldn't is outside of Dennis, I wouldn't want the Planning Board to read this without having any conversations and not see anything we talked about. So I wouldn't want to post it until they at least had some knowledge of.
I mean after.
We recognize it doesn't include what we talked about.
I mean after the planning board, I just mean, rather than wait till a week before and say we're done, I'd like to see it come out three weeks before or four weeks before, so they can have some. You know, there's no reason in two more weeks you couldn't get this out there, let people read the draft. And then when the final draft comes out, if it's only a week before, at least they've already got a good idea what's happened. And then we can even, then the final draft highlight the changes that we've made, so, and who's taken the time to read to see the changes.
Right, and then I like to go through two and just, you know, hit, hit on the key points though, it's somebody that, you know, doesn't have to go through the twenty-six pages with the bylaw to try to understand where how they can do anything and understand that, okay, yeah, it's in these zones that these are allowed and this is the, this is the general process of what we're looking at rather than getting into more of the technical weeds.
Exactly, yes, Dennis.
Each meeting that we've had discussing the proposals, interested parties, because each meeting we have the draft, it gets printed out, interested parties all along have requested that. So people who are seriously interested in it have been looking at this from, you know, the first time we started it, all the way along. So every time there's a, a new draft or tweak, that gets put on to the Mary Ann's records and people request an updated copy of that, so it, it's not like, I'm saying boom, pulling this thing out and people can look at it. People seriously interested have been following it right along. As soon as we do anything on it, it gets put out there so somebody can look at it.
And that's good, but there's still a difference between that, we're wanting, you know, where I'm hoping to see two hundred people for this meeting and this, maybe more because of what it is.
Oh, yeah.
So there's got to be a lot more interest coming up and I would hope that we get close to the, uh, the meeting and people see what's posted on the warrant, they're gonna, they're gonna come read it, I hope.
We have a public hearing, right? We scheduled that already for the, uh, we had to do that to incorporate some general by, well, mass general laws. And that might be a meeting where we can also expound upon the progress, because I think it's later in November. Because we knew it was tight, we couldn't.
We got twenty-six.
Twenty-six, but that would still be two weeks before the special town meeting and I think was it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd.
Was it the last week in November or the second week in December where we tried to put the, uh, the standard presentation that we always do before special town meeting saying, here are the articles, the finance team usually has a couple comments if they want on that.
I think we set that up to the week before, we were originally trying to have a meeting.
It's usually the week before.
Okay, right, and we pushed off the fourth, so we may have moved that other.
That one, we got the fourth.
We can do that on the fourth.
Fourth. It's the next regular meeting.
Fourth or fifth, I guess, because a lot of times we do it on the fifth because it usually is a finance committee meeting night, so it used to get scheduled on there at night if I'm correct. The, uh, so I'm okay with either. Okay, and I just want to make sure we keep the Planning Board aware of those dates so that if they choose to or if we agree that it's worth everybody getting together on the same one. I think they already have a public, couple, public hearing notices for some of their bylaws as well already posted. So there's a lot of meetings happening, so if anybody is interested, check on my town government and check with the town administrator's office, check in with the Planning Board and they can update you on any of the posted meetings that they're planning on and what you can or can't do to participate. So the, that covers my thoughts on that. Did we have more comments right now on the general bylaws of the marijuana establishments?
I didn't notice any, um, any language, it's alluding to things we want to consider proximity to in this, I thought we wanted to put that as part of this, so we could address but not have to address. I didn't see the proximity system there.
And that's what I was.
Something that fell under the, under the zone.
Yeah, they would kind of say that we consider the host agreement, but I think we still need to probably allude to it in our, in our bylaw to say that we've got, we've got to consider these, doesn't say we've got to make restrictions, but I'd like it included in the one, we've got to consider them. Make sure people know we have the legal right to consider those.
Okay.
Playground side areas.
Okay, considering the negotiation here, portion of the host community agreement.
Okay, exactly.
So specifically what I discussed, I'm not saying anybody else agreed with this, so please, don't take it that way. But when we were looking at the last draft, I had a copy of from the Planning Board on the zoning bylaws, we were looking at the restrictions and prohibitions. And we had ten items that are identified, you can't be within five hundred feet of. I had suggested at the last meeting that of A through J, A and the last four, G, H, I, J, wouldn't be part of a blanket statement zoning bylaw, but would be something that can be discussed at that host community agreement discussion. Because it might be something that is more subjective to what's being affected. Let me list the, the names of these and then we'll just see what we can or can't do from there. This isn't a, this is just a, put it on the table, let's discuss. A, a building containing another marijuana establishment, R M D, O M M D or A M R, except for facilities that are owned or leased by the same operator. I believe the general reason that shows up is, or two, one is not creating too much competition within the same general region of any town. The second is the concern of one neighborhood or one area getting overwhelmed with all the marijuana and not spreading it out more evenly through the town. But the reason I think this is something that shouldn't be necessarily a strict prohibition or restriction, one is the restriction's five hundred feet, so for a lot of people, if you want to relate that, that's five telephone poles down the, down the street. In a lot of our areas, you can't see five telephone because the road turns or whatever. But the second thing I'm trying to bring up here is it doesn't identify this as the same type of marijuana facility. So if you had a retailer and you had someone doing delivery and you had someone doing testing, I'm not so sure how much those all play into those same concerns about being within five hundred feet of each other, because one of the things that having them close together does is everybody knows where they're at, they're not spread out. So it's easier for the police to enforce and maintain a presence in the neighborhood, it's easier for the neighbors to know well, if all the kids are hanging out on that block, then they're all hanging out across from all of the business versus well, they just go five hundred feet down in front of the next business and then five hundred feet down in front of the next business. So it could be a benefit, but it could also be a negative, so that's why I'm saying, I don't know how important that should be in a strict versus more of a subjective, we get the public input from that neighborhood and they can tell us how does it lay out, does it really have a huge impact on our neighborhood or not? And we can take the public's input and then roll it into the H C A slash licensing side versus the other side. The other four items, a daycare childcare facility, public swimming area or pool, structured use, structure used for religious purposes, and the last was residential dwellings or group homes. Let me explain where I'm coming from, why I suggested those wouldn't also be strictly enforced. One is it depends on what the business owner is proposing to install. It may not matter that a logistics slash delivery company that doesn't house anything on site, if that's how they're presenting their business plan, is located across from a public swimming area or pool. It's just trucks that park there, people show up, go do their job, they come back and everything has to be, they pick it up at one site, drop it off at another, and then they're just bringing their vehicles back to park somewhere, so their delivery. So they're a delivery company that never brings anything back to the office. A daycare childcare facility, again, within five hundred feet may or may not apply because it depends on what they're doing again. If there's a testing facility, they're not necessarily throwing it in the neighborhood space that come use this. If you're lucky, they're just building a building that says some scientific name on the label and they just do business in and then they leave. And again, it's well-contained and secure. So I think it allows for some subjective reasoning in whether we think that should be. Residential dwellings or group homes. The reason I got caught up on this one is the words residential dwelling are too vague. That could be anybody's house. It doesn't necessarily speak to a program, residential dwellings. Group homes are a little bit more in line with, okay, there's some type of program here for a certain. But a group home could be elderly, the group home could be for adults that may have mental disabilities or other needs. Could even be physical needs. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not old enough to know or make choices that being in proximity to this place is necessarily a negative thing. It's legal. So if they wanted to go over there and they're over the age and they want to go over there, then just because they live in a group home, it doesn't necessarily mean they shouldn't allow the business to be next to where they're living. I'm only bringing that up because I think it does allow for a little bit more subjective review rather than a flat out. The last was the structure used for religious purposes. I think one of the things I'm looking at on this is based on the actual number of zones we have, plus the number of churches we have and the proximity of those churches. Many of them fall in our business commercial area, which then means you can't build within five hundred feet of that. Which means now you've got maybe only two parcels left in all your business commercial that could fit. And at that point, it almost becomes spot zoning. So I think we've got to be careful with all of these, putting them into here versus pulling some of them out and trying to move them over. So that's what I was discussing with the planning board the last time. Again, I just, I just put it on the table, there was no counter discussion of good, bad, or indifferent. I know they're trying to work through and discuss on themselves how they, but that's what Greg and I were talking about possibly. I think that's what you were just referring to, not seeing that in the general bylaw of some considerations.
I believe, I believe in me that we both attended with the planning board, we discussed that, we discussed it with the attorney. Counsel said that that would be something we could split out. I thought you guys were going to pursue it that way, I don't know if you have. Have you pursued just the proximity to education?
But not agreed on it.
We're hoping to see it on your end, the proximity to educational facilities and put the rest of it in the host agreement. That was, that idea was to save you guys from having to come up with all those distances and all those different things as well, because it gets.
And if you don't do that, there's very little to have the joint meeting on for the HCA. I mean, that's the basis of the joint meeting is you guys still have input on it, it's not like we're taking your input out of it. We're just moving where it lands. Potentially helping pass the zoning bylaw by not putting as many restrictions here, but allowing it to still have a place where the final vote can still make that determination. I'm just explaining why it was laid out that way. Otherwise, we could have just did what Andrew did, let you do your thing and just see where it lands. And, um, the only other thing I had on your kind of revised thing that you emailed out was when you go further into the restrictions and prohibations and you get to section twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or paragraphs twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I think we should just remove that. Because it's just a repeat of the license cap. And that's a general bylaw under our bylaw, it doesn't need to fit in theirs because then we've got to remember which one gets revised if we ever change a law, bylaw later. Redundancies sometimes makes it harder to track it down. If you want, you can just refer to our general bylaw by reference rather than the specific language.
Is that under that same section?
Yeah, it's the last three. You just kind of took the same language from the general bylaw and threw it into theirs, restrictions being the number of licenses. But because it's a license staying, I was thinking it would be more appropriate to fall under the general by, bylaw related to licensing.
Did you have on the schools?
Schools are one that's staying, I wouldn't even ask them not to, and I think the state requires that anywhere. Up to, I think Dennis mentioned something that the state wasn't as restrictive, like they didn't include kindergarten or preschool. So they, I think they rewrote it to be a little bit more broad, to be like pre-K up to.
K to W.
Right.
Yeah.
Where the, the state wasn't quite as tight or something on that, they didn't include kindergarten or some reason.
And I think you've got to include daycare facilities, don't you?
That was the one I was suggesting bringing back into our discussion because it depends on this. Yeah, daycare and childcare facilities, because it depends on the location and the type of business.
Most churches have daycares in them.
Right, and then you have a whole bunch of private daycare and some of it's not always advertised on the street. And it, it adds up and it doesn't necessarily have to be registered with the town, right? If they're doing a daycare, it's not a business license. I'm asking, because that's something I'm not very familiar with. I didn't know if it was a state licensing, not local, that's all I meant.
Both, both, yeah.
Okay. That's why I'm asking. I never endeavored to get into daycare owning and so I'm learning.
Well, when you have a few kids, you'll get it.
But at least now what it means is we have a, a registration. But if that's the case, we can also look at that registration, compare it to the business commercial zoning or the industrial zoning and five, find out, five hundred feet, how much zone do you have left? If you don't have enough zone left, you're going to have to expand an overlay district versus, or you're going to be stuck with the potential of it being identified as spot zoning. So that's why I'm suggesting some of these, you pull a lot of there and it's not going to be reviewed as spot zoning. And then we do it case by case.
I asked that question at the seminar by the CCC of Holy Cross College this last fall when they handed out their potential regulations. And they took out all of those other items that you were talking about. And I asked the chairman, you know, why are you doing this? He really wouldn't answer it. I'm like, the ABC has regulations which I think should mirror what this is between daycares, public parks, any of those educational things. And I'm like, well, what's the difference if, you know, you, you put a package store next door to a church? I mean, you don't allow that, but you take that away from this aspect of licensing. I mean, nobody could answer it. They just kind of moved on. Which I found a little gloomy.
The state's got to get a lot of money out of this, more than we will.
Oh, yeah.
So they want to get a little more commissive.
Yes, Claire?
Just to get my two cents, how I feel on this. The marijuana should be treated just like liquor stores.
It's generally how the state is, try to mention it.
It's the same type of thing. It is.
If it is, then.
And that's what.
Liquor stores can go into any commercial zone without all the additional restrictions they're writing into here. So it's not quite being treated the same, even though the state has tried to say.
Close to it, you know, the same things there.
Agreed, but what I'm trying to say here is these additional restrictions and prohibitions on top of the limited zoning that's actually available is not treating it the same as alcohol. You're being more restrictive. And so we're trying to find that balance and that's all I'm bringing it up for, is you're being more restrictive. You have three licensed package stores, or at least two, did I count them right? You got two licensed package stores on the common. You got two churches in town hall being used as a religious church on Sundays.
But they're more than five hundred feet, right?
They're all within five hundred feet, if some of them are within a hundred feet.
One is closer than the other.
But Marketplace is right next to what, St. Joseph's, is it? Which one's out there?
The previous boards must have approved that, but I don't know if it's hot liquor or beer and wine, if that's where the difference is, you know? I remember when they were converting what is now the, what is that, Red Tomato?
Yeah.
When that was turned into the Colonel Isaac Barry. That was a contention of the Catholic Church and the Protestant Church. Catholic Church, I actually think was closer. And that was brought up at the ABC hearings in Boston when they were trying to get a full liquor license there as a restaurant.
More than the beer? Yeah, I testified at that hearing.
Yeah, I was at that.
Yeah.
And because of the distance.
And that's where maybe looking at this, is this is where you say something such as like retail has to be this restrictive, but other types might not have the five hundred restriction from a place of religion because there's.
But it's easy to do that in the host agreement without having to try to lay out all the F N scenarios in the zoning bylaw. We can sit down at the host agreement, look at it for where it is and what it is, and then come up with our distance that we all agree on. Hence having a meeting with you guys and the vote by you guys to approve the host agreement.
But it was just.
Still get the zoning saying.
Why the thoughts came up. And I do believe it would be good practice that no matter what host community agreement process we go through when final decisions are made, we do look at those somewhat as precedent setting. So if the same general information was presented to us with the same general concerns, we shouldn't just keep flip-flopping how we do it. We should be, okay, well, this was brought up, these were the concerns, these were the relationships, the types of work, the type of business. If that's consistent with presented the next time, then we shouldn't change our mind.
And if we find something that works that we can sit down and write, it could become a zoning bylaw. But rather than trying to make the zoning bylaw too cumbersome at this point, too confusing, I'd like to see it streamlined. See these covered in the host agreement. And if we find a way to write those intelligibly, intelligently, so that they're understandable and comprehensive, in the future we can do it. But since we're under time constraints, I think simpler is better. We can always amend the bylaw and add those even at annual town meeting in the next years and finalize them. But I just like, want to make sure we get something through that's going to be, you know, understood by the public and voted on and hopefully passed. And I think if it's too restrictive, everything's going to, it's going to make a problem open up.
So those are my thoughts. I know there was some, a couple of things that came up that Andrew mentioned and I think we'd already discussed, you probably just haven't presented it into a new draft that you're giving out to people, was the, uh, some of the conflicts between all work within a building, but you didn't put in the exception or label it differently for outdoor cultivation, that was also, so just, you know, more cleanup type. And the only thing I was, on the draft process, licensing process that I wanted to talk about, and again, I think, I think you did a really good job laying out this process and putting everything together in the drafts. The only thing I thought on the process was all the work through the various boards for a special permit, I think does have to come after the HCA process. Now, that doesn't mean we don't advise them to get, you know, talk to the boards to kind of get an idea, get a feeling, okay, what's going to be needed? Or departments, be it the police department or whatever else. But I think we need them to go through our process, go to the state, get their provisional license before they come back to us and say, and here's the final plan in detail, because now the state can't change us, change it on us later. And force them to come back anyway, because I think the state might have that right when they go for provisional license, if they say, no, you got to do this. And if we've already laid something out, is it the state rules or they actually have to come back and then talk to us about how they're going to change their plan and then go back to the state? I would like to, I think that's how the process has been going with the state, is get the HCA, go to them, and then go back to your town and finish it up. So I think we just got to find a way to fit that in there.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out kind of like the best, you know, kind of the best pathway as far as how to do it. It's really kind of like chicken and the egg kind of thing. How does the state, you know, is the state going to want to, because I know that they put in that provision to say, okay, you don't need all of your town approvals before the state will give you, will give you a provisional license. But to what level do they want to see, do they want you to certify that what you're presenting is conforming with the zoning? Do they want to make sure that your security plan has been officially approved by the, by the police and then incorporated into your site? I guess that's kind of the thing that you've got to, you know, whether or not you want to kind of force them, hey, get all your ducks in the row at the local level before you start talking to the state. And then we're a little, I guess, we can be more amenable to doing an amendment to a site plan or a, or a security provision if the state kicks it back versus, you know, the state approving something and then just go, wait a second, that doesn't work for us. And then try to force, and then try to go to the state to say, or consider a change.
I got you. I genuinely think it's more just we have the right to be more stringent. We can't relax the state rules.
I just wouldn't want, I, I just wouldn't want to see the state approve something that's kind of allowed and they see it's allowed and then come back to the town, the town. Basically say, no, well, the person who's living next to that doesn't, does not want to see that or wants to see that changed.
Well, that's going to be the HCA part. And that's where they still are going to have to provide enough information for us to know what's going on and what's happening. But the details can be hashed out at the site plan submittal for the planning board and then the building permitting and all that.
So they can go at the official application for site plan, special permit from the planning board, but after the official provisional license from the state.
That's how I, because then they don't have to feel overly committed until they already know that the state's done their bidding.
But before that, they have to at minimum means of that, put all the involved departments and ready to come.
To understand, or don't hold it against us if we throw the ropes at you. It's like, go figure out what they might want to see and what the standard policies might be. Because I'm guessing the, the police chief is going to have to come up with standard policy of expectations. Which should of course come back to the board of selection for.
But it'll prevent our departments from putting too much time into it if it hasn't cleared the state. So another reason to have it go up through us for us before any of our people get too invested in it. Find out someone's just feeling the waters in this and they're not going to call it whatever. This is why I was saying before, not just for this, I'd still like to see this process in, in a sheet like this for, for other permits for town, for any process of the town. Because as much confusion as it causes us to try to put it in, you to put this down and write it like this, imagine what most people deal with and they come here for any type of parent or application. I'd really like to see this continued for other things are much simpler, but I, this is, this is why I was saying that. If we don't clearly understand we want them to do it, there's anybody else. And in that case, they could try and, that would just not be the issue.
And at the very bottom here, the, uh, building permit and then moving a certificate of occupancy, you might want to do a circle arrow. Changes, go back up to start over and then come back down through, because changes, we'll have to go through the planning. So if it's in the process, then the contractor knows that once I get the permit, doesn't mean I can just rewrite my, my plan. And it'll be obvious in the process, so there's not even like, oh, we accidentally, oh, you should have known. They'll point to and say, well, you just say, get to the end and we're done and.
People like to be when they don't like the answer they get, so.
Get it approved and change it, sounds like a solo plan somewhere.
Do we have any further comments on marijuana bylaw stuff, the general bylaws? Andrew also proposed, uh, we haven't proposed a fee schedule for licensing, but we, it's written in there that if there will be fees, you're going to actually have to pay a fee to get a license. Last week Greg brought up a thing where we also have to kind of revisit our ABCC license and pricing, our fee schedule for that. Probably kind of get the two a little bit commiser, similar. And Andrew proposed the, what, the consultant fee?
Deputy.
Which is more your guys' thing, but it's made sense. Which is more your guys' thing, but it's made sense to me, but I'm not su, I don't have familiarity with your consulting costs.
It would give you the legal authorization to establish the, or a fund to accept, um, consulting fees. So right now we don't have that officially as a adopted, uh, you know, it's a state law that you have to adopt locally, but if you adopt it, then you can set a, you know, say like fifteen hundred dollars per, that will work. Any person who is an applicant for a site plan approval pays the town, that money goes toward the consulting fees, if they don't use the whole thing, the consulting fees, they get that, that money back. Basically allows you to do that.
No, we, we get to keep that.
But it just takes a little bit of cost.
Are you saying Dennis might become a consultant? Not just, I'm just joking.
It just takes that cost for not the town. And most of the applicant.
Put the burden on them.
I have nothing further on the agenda today outside of an executive session item. I'll give everybody the last chance for any public comment. Okay, then, we're going to go to executive session. I would request. All right, uh, let me do this. I'll make the motion. Because I got to practice it.
Sure.
Make a motion, go into executive session as per MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, exemption one, to discuss complaints of or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will be going into executive session. When we adjourn from executive session, we will not be continuing open meeting, and we will adjourn from opening meeting from there.
Are you ladies and gentlemen?
I second that motion.
In favor.
We need to roll call.
Matt Urban, yes.
Charlie Chase, yes.
There goes all of us.